Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting in the Lebanon Planning Commission to order. I ask you to be standing for a flag salute, please.
With the regions to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. And with liberty and justice for all.
And Kelly, you want to call the roll?
Sir, Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Malloy is absent. Commissioner Angel Ford is absent. Commissioner Fountain is absent. Commissioner Baxter, Commissioner Bashirz, Vice Chair Garrett Kounaraski, and Chair Robertson.
Here. Okay, I assume everybody's had a chance to review the minutes from December 18th. Any additions, corrections to the minutes? Okay, then, seeing none or hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We have one public hearing tonight, Planning File CI-24-01. And my understanding is we don't have any legal reading?
We do not. This is a legislative proceeding, and so we can proceed without the normal quasi-judicial hearing procedures.
Okay, and so there's no export, take on fact, or anything of that that needs to be disclosed? With that, then, we are... We will pause. We are stuck.
Apologies, everybody. Unpause. Maybe. I broke it. We can just do it without video. See if it'll share.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. Correct me if I screwed up. All right, then, with that, we're good to go. All right, then we will open Planning File CI-24-01. And I'm going to turn it over to staff for staff report.
Apologies for technical difficulties, everybody. So before you tonight is a code interpretation of the Lebanon Development Code. An application was presented before the city for the city to interpret whether or not recreational trails were permitted within the low-density residential zone. For the interpretation, first of all, the interpretation needs to identify that... We have a couple of things to consider. A, the city has an adopted Trails Master Plan. The Trails Master Plan identifies planned and proposed trails throughout the entire city within all of our development, all of our zones, including trails on-street and off-street within the low-density residential zone. There are two specific trail segments that are within the low-density residential zone that are not on public sidewalk areas. And then the city adopted this Trails Master Plan. It was being developed somewhere between 2007 and 2009. The city during that time also was in the process of doing an entire Development Code update as we were updating our Development Code for compliance with the new comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2004. And so that Development Code process was completed in 2008. And so these documents were being developed at the same time. And so you have the comprehensive plan, the Development Code, and our Trails Master Plan. Trails Master Plan was adopted by the City Council. City Council has obviously implemented the Trails Master Plan over the last couple of years. Lebanon Development Code has been obviously implemented over the last couple of years. And so it's our job to try to identify how to mesh it all together. And so the first item is for consideration when we're looking at a land use determination and code interpretation. Right now, the RL Zone identifies two different areas of recreational trails. You have a specific designation of recreational trails. And then you also have the Parks Open Spaces and Recreational Uses designation. Our code specifically identifies parks as including and specifically calling out public trails maintained by the city as part of the park system. And so therefore, it is categorized under Parks Open Space and Recreational Uses. And then you also have the recreational trails designation as well. And so we're looking at Section 16.02.010E, which talks about consistency with plans and laws. And it says each procedure shall initiated under this code shall be consistent with the city's adopted comprehensive plan as implemented by this code, its adopted master plans, and applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations. So within our staff report that was provided, we identified several areas in which the adopted master plan itself is consistent with the comprehensive plan and how the trail alignments, generally speaking, that are identified within the Trails Master Plan implement the comprehensive plan being located generally along the alignment of waterways and such like that. And so the two areas specifically within the low-density residential zone specifically align with some of those comprehensive plan designations as well. So there are no specific comprehensive plan goals or policies that specifically prohibit parks or recreational facilities being within the low-density residential zone. And the Trails Master Plan obviously specifically highlights that those trails are aligned within those areas as well. And the Trails Master Plan obviously complies with that consistency section that says that the Trails Master Plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So it aligns with that Section 16.02.010E where the master plan and comprehensive plan align appropriately. We also, like I said, have that definition of the city where it has the city parks definition and recreation areas, where that is the most specific definition where we have of city parks and recreation uses. So a city park means all city-owned and maintained parks, playgrounds, and public recreation areas. And recreation areas is very clearly defined in there, which means an area within a public park. And it specifically says, "as well as public trails maintained by the city for public use." And so it is encapsulated within the definition of a city park use that public trails are incorporated with that in its entirety. So based on the definitions, recreational trails can be considered as parks and open space and recreational uses, in our opinion. And so when you have the consideration of the land use table where it identifies other public uses such as parks and recreation facilities, open space, and pedestrian amenities, and it specifically calls out when it's facilitated with adoption of a facility, when it is associated with implementing adopted facility plans as well, it seems like that most aligns appropriately with parks and trails and the facilities for trails as well. There's also specifically Section 16.02.010 that specifically talks about when you are doing interpretations like these, you have the most restrictive interpretation that should be applied when there is a conflict within the code. It is a longer language than just use the most restrictive interpretation, though. It specifically says that where the code imposes greater restrictions than those imposed or required by other rules or regulations, the most restrictive or that imposing a higher standard shall be the thing that governs. So the Trails Master Plan provides the higher imposed standard. The Trails Master Plan identifies the clear alignment that the city entail intends for the alignment of trails within the city itself. It identifies how those trails should be designed. It identifies the types of amenities that should be provided along those trails, so on and so forth. So a higher standard of development and intentional review is identified within the master plan itself. And so when you're incorporating the fact that when you're looking at consistency of the code, master plans and consistency with the comprehensive plan and the higher standard shall govern, master plan itself provides that higher standard. We believe that since the master plan itself identifies that trails should be intended within the low-density residential zone, and since our own definitions include trails as part of the park system, that the use of the other public uses such as parks and recreational facilities, open spaces, and pedestrian amenities should be utilized as the appropriate use designation when considering public trails, which would allow for recreational trails to be included within the low-density residential zone, subject to either a conditional use permit or if it's implementing the master plan, subject to an administrative review. There is also a LUBA case that we included as part of the record itself that does further solidify the consideration of trails to be included as part of the park system itself, where the LUBA case identifies that trails are to be considered as parks. And so that further solidifies the consideration that that is the most appropriate use and determination. So that generally identifies how we thought through the process, making sure that we are honoring the master plan that has been approved by council and has been adopted, how it implements the comprehensive plan, and how it intends for trails to be implemented, and how it's laid out in our report. Obviously, you do have a public comment that has also been provided to you. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have associated with that comment. Trey, do you have anything you want to add?
I'm sure I will throughout the course of this, but not right now.
Okay, any questions? What's it, what we're considering, what the process is? We'll have opportunity for discussion later. As far as the specifics, are there any questions for Kelly? Tina, you look like you have a question. Okay. All right, seeing none, then, we will open the public testimony portion. Ask the applicant to come forward. State your name, sign in, please. Because of the nature of our hearing tonight, we're going to do this just a little bit differently. We're not necessarily talking about an applicant in favor of and opposition to, like we normally have before. So what we're going to ask the testimony to do is, if you agree with the testimony that you're about to hear from the applicant, then we will have you identify as such. If you agree with the testimony of the city, the way, the interpretation, I should say, of the city, then we will have you identify as such. We're going to leave the public hearing open through the remainder of the hearing and give the applicant a final opportunity to rebut after all conversation, after all discussion has been completed. So then we will close the public testimony after the final rebuttal. So the final question, then, is there any objection to the process and the notices that's been sent?
I'm curious why it's elevated to a legislative decision opposed to administrative or quasi-judicial as it started out?
Because the city attorney wasn't able to look at it until more recently. And I'm not sure it's elevated is the correct word. I think it's de-escalated would be a better word. But it's pretty clear to me, after looking at the application between quasi-judicial and legislative, that this is an application that would be applicable to multiple properties throughout the city and, in fact, outside the city as it relates to the trail plan. So there's no doubt that, in my mind, it's legislative as opposed to quasi-judicial. At the same time, I did approach you beforehand, and I thought you agreed with that.
Curious to hear the explanation for that. And then was noticing provided for legislative opposed to a quasi-judicial?
And I believe it was, and that's why we talked earlier today. And I'm getting a nod that, yes, the notice for a legislative hearing was provided. And that's also why I asked if there is a specific objection to any notice that was provided, that we'd like to address it and address it now.
Okay, so for the record, my name is Laura LaRocque. I live at 450 Walnut.
So let me pause you for just a quick second. Is the process agreeable with you?
It's a change of events. I haven't really considered all the implications for it. But at this moment, I do not have an objection.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, I didn't hear that.
I do not have an objection at this moment, but this is just news that's just been presented. So I haven't really considered...
Do you need time?
Are you offering a continuance of the hearing?
Not a continuance of the hearing, but if you wanted time right now to think and consider, I just didn't want to rush you.
Yeah, no, I'm fine to move forward with my testimony.
Okay.
And does the Planning Commission understand the change in process, and you're okay with that? Okay.
Could you explain the difference between judicial and legislative to me, please?
Sure. So legislative is more general in nature. It would be a policy, a law, an ordinance that applies generally throughout the city. A quasi-judicial generally would be referring to a specific property or a small group of properties. The difference in how the hearing is held is that a quasi-judicial is more like a trial, generally. We have an applicant, we then have, we don't have, you know, we don't square people in, we don't cross-examine. But at the same time, we have an applicant that has the burden of proof. We have an opposition to that, and then we have a rebuttal. And basically, then, it's, and this planning commission has to sit as a judge more than a law-making body, right? Like the Oregon Legislature, right? The Oregon Legislature, they don't have to declare every time they have a bias or they have, they know they're coming in with a bias. They don't have to declare if they have a conflict of interest. For the most part, they all have conflicts of interest. So it's different, it's basically the difference between judicial, but it's quasi-judicial and legislative.
Thank you.
Okay, so my apology for interrupting.
That's okay, thank you. So again, my name is Laura LaRocque, 450 Walnut Street here in Lebanon. So I have just kind of condensed my thoughts into a more concise version. So this is kind of more or less a repeat of what you've already saw. And the intent of my presentation this evening is just to provide a brief overcap of that and not read directly. So I'm here to oppose the city staff's interpretation, which essentially reclassifies recreational trails as parks through an administrative interpretation rather than a formal zone code amendment. This interpretation directly contradicts expressed language in the Development Code that prohibits recreational trails in the low-density zone. And I think I'll just pause there to say that I'm not opposed to having trails in a residential zone. They could be appropriate there, but how the code is written currently, they are prohibited. And I'll kind of walk through my thoughts on how I counter the city's position. So the first claim the city makes is that trails are parks. So let me walk through how they've arrived at that. They look for a code section outside of the Development Code that describes a city park. That city park definition, that's in the Park Chapter, not the zoning code, references the term recreational area. Both of these definitions are, again, in a Park section outside the Development Code. If you look in the glossary section of the Development Code, it explicitly defines a recreational trail, and it also defines a city park. These terms, recreational trail and park, are later referenced in every development table throughout all zones of the Development Code. So it's clear in my mind that the definition in the Development Code is referring specifically to a use categorized that's in a trail. These uses are either permitted or not permitted by a certain review types. And they do differentiate between parks and the trail system. So the explicit language of the Development Code clearly calls out that there is a difference between this, and staff's interpretation counters this directly. Staff's second claim is that the Trail Master Plan demonstrates intent. So essentially, a master plan is a long-range vision. It outlines goals and policies for the city. Those goals and policies are implemented through the Development Code. The Development Code is the actual trigger or the law that are applied to development. You cannot look to a goal or a policy to say this is what's permitted in a certain zone. That's the intent and the purpose of this Development Code. So essentially, the comprehensive plan provides as a guidance, while the zoning laws are the tools that use to implement. If a master plan proposes a change that conflicts with the zoning code, the appropriate process is a code amendment to change the Development Code to match the master plan, in this, in this instance, the Parks Plan and then the Trails Master Plan. The third claim that the city makes is that trails have been developed in the residential zone, again, expressing that some sort of intent or precedent allows them to bypass what's clearly prohibited in the Development Code. The city refers to several different trails throughout the community, which I point out in my testimony, are essentially public sidewalks. Many of these public sidewalks were actually constructed as part of a road. Their purpose, and they predate the actual Trails Master Plan. So when these are referred to on the Trail Master Plan, they're essentially connectors to developed recreational trails in other parts of the community. If you apply the city's logic, then these sidewalks should be treated as a park. So park rules and regulations would say things are prohibited, like hours of operation, smoking, things of this nature, which is obviously a flaw in the interpretation to classify them the same way as a park. The city uses a LUBA case to argue that trails can be classified in the park. What they fail to note is that the park in this case, the recreational trail or definition, did not exist. So as a determination was made, is there was not clear guidance in their Development Code to say that there is a specific use in that community? In their case, they had to make an interpretation because the definition didn't exist. So this is not a clear case that establishes that trails in the city of Lebanon, which are clearly defined in the glossary of the Development Code, should be confused with parks that are also clearly defined in Development Code. So the key policies in the comprehensive plan also say that zoning ordinances, when need to be implemented, should be done through a formal legislation, meaning a code amendment, not an interpretation. Policy 8 requires periodic review and updates. So when conflicts are noticed, city staff should take the opportunity to update the Development Code through a code amendment process. It's been 16 years since Development Code was written in its most recent format. In 2008, this error existed. And since that 16-year period, the city has not taken the time to update this to carry out the vision of the Trails Master Plan. I'll also point out there is legal precedence for the position that I'm taking. So I point out some cases that also were before LUBA. And LUBA ruled that in this case, when there's expressed language in the Development Code that you can rely on, such as the definitions I noted in the glossary of the Development Code and as they're defined in the use sections, that you can't counter the expressed language. You can't make up a definition that fits to meet your intent to carry out a purpose. So with that, I'll just say some closing statements for it. The city is essentially distorting definitions to justify a desired outcome. They want to permit trails in the residential zone. While that might be a good idea, this is not the mechanism to do so. The city has neglected for 16 years to formally amend the Development Code. I implore the commission today to encourage the staff to actually go through that process by denying this code interpretation. I urge the commission to reject the interpretation and require that a formal zone amendment takes place.
I wanted to go ahead and just add a little bit of something. I'm Scott LaRocque, 450 Walnut Street. I just, again, wanted to restate that we're not against trails. That's not the intent of this. You've all heard Kelly, or, sorry, staff drone on for 10 minutes trying to explain their process and how they went through and came to this determination, rather than just update your code. That's all.
Okay, any questions? All right, then there will be an opportunity for rebuttal after all discussion is completed. There may be questions in. And is there anybody else with us wishes to testify? And if you do, please state whether you're agreeing with the city's interpretation or the applicant's interpretation. Okay. Go ahead and sign in if you haven't already, state your name.
You betcha. First of all, thank you for being here and serving the community. I'm Rod Sell. I live at 1955 River Road in Lebanon. And I am the Build Lebanon Trails Board President and have been since its inception in 2005. Just a couple of things. I am in support of the staff's report and decision on this. And there's a little bit of background. First of all, may I hand out trail maps that show you with the trail system? I have a few extras. And the main reason for that is just so you can see the scope. And if you want to know where that zone is, we can point that out. It's a small part of a project we're trying to build. So a little bit of history. In December, the Build Lebanon Trails applied to Lynn County for a conditional use permit, excuse me, a permit to build a trail, which we call the Georgia Pacific Mill Race Trail because it's property that we were able to get donated to Build Lebanon Trails from Georgia Pacific. It's a mill race. It's, it used to have a wooden dam across the South Saniam River right below the East Grant Street Bridge, and it was taken out by a flood, I'm not sure the year, but a long time ago. And at that time, the Mill Race was abandoned. And Georgia Pacific is the, was the current owner before Build Lebanon Trails. So we applied for the conditional use permit. It was awarded. And then NIMBY LLC, they appealed it. And we went in front of the commission again. And they approved the conditional use permit and denied the appeal. The 24th of this month is the last chance to appeal that decision to the Lynn County Board of Commissioners. And so a lot of history here and talking basically about the same thing. The trails have been being built in Lebanon in residential low-density zones for a long time. And as the Building Planning Commission, you know that we've been getting a lot of three-story, high-density units with very little green space built in our community along with the ability to build more dense buildings on even residential zones, in low-density residential zones. So my point is that we really need to build the trails to have, give people a place to get away from the high-density environment to be able to explore the greenways and the rivers and the lakes that we are so thankful to have in our community. Any questions?
Any questions for Rod? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing no movement, or no movement, I should say, then we will open it up to conversation between staff and planning commission, again, leaving the public testimony portion open. You want to do that? Well, that's normally how we do it, but I thought we were waiting until afterwards.
It's up to you.
All right. Okay, so questions for staff?
I'm curious what the implications of this code interpretation could have long-term in the development, kind of make more sense to redefine or differentiate. Or is that what you'd say? or is that what you'd say?
So code interpretations are there to interpret the code as it's written today. Code interpretations are there to clarify the city's position on how the code is to be interpreted until such time as codes are amended. In reviewing the different sections that the applicant has identified, where recreational trails are identified as the areas in which they're noted as listed within the Development Code, they are listed in the same way as the open space use that we are defining as the most appropriate based off of our interpretation of what the park use is more appropriate use as. So the alignment is incredibly aligned. So I don't think that there is a large impact in terms of the development itself.
Is there an option to a different type of application that would lead to a different type of an evaluation?
Yes, and so we're before you tonight with a code interpretation application because that is the application in which the applicant chose to apply. The applicant could have applied for a code amendment to amend the Development Code. The city has not done so. We haven't had a capacity or an intent or a purpose at this point in time to modify the Development Code. Inconsistencies occur, and interpretations have to happen on a regular basis, and we make modifications to the code on a regular basis. An application for amendment to the Development Code could happen at any point in time, and the applicant could choose to do that, or this is the application that's been put in front of us.
I would also add that it's not unexpected nor unusual to have an ambiguity or a conflict within this many different things that have done, that have occurred over different periods of time, right? It's hard enough just to make sure the actual code itself is consistent, right? As you change different things with the master plans and with the overall documents that guide us, it's not unusual to discover that there's, you know, what's here doesn't seem to jive with what's here. So that's where we come to this body and then ultimately potentially the City Council to say, well, what's the intent and what's really what the city wants to occur under this situation? And in those regards, when you're, as long as you're not violating a very distinct zoning, either clear intent or violating a very clear understanding of our law where there's not an ambiguity or not a discrepancy, the higher courts are going to give great discretion to the local government to interpret its own code. But that's not staff's interpretation. It's this body's interpretation and the city, or potentially the City Council's interpretation. What Kelly's done and what the staff has done is given you our best interpretation of what we believe the intent, the policy, right, the policy intent, and this, again, the elected bodies or the appointed bodies dictate what the policy is. But what we've attempted to do is give you an interpretation of what we believe to be the policy of this, of this board and of the City Council as to what this means. But ultimately, it's this body or ultimately the City Council's determination of what that policy was and what this means, and then ultimately, if we're going to get great discretion from the higher courts to interpret our own codes.
That was my next question, was just the happenstance that there is some ambiguity, but that's not unreasonable. It's likely to see that in any case. I think we heard a really compelling argument, but if you look at that outside of interpreting the code as it is right now, we're able to make that interpretation without considering the ambiguity.
Other questions?
So when I was reading the code, trying to understand this and all the information, I noted that there were other types of parks that were classified separately, maybe the BMX park and the skate park. And I'm trying to rectify in my mind why we're saying we can treat these different, which, I mean, it certainly makes sense to me, than the recreational trail, and why we're saying, well, the recreational trail is fitting within this park classification, but then we have this other classification for other types of parks that don't fit in the park. So is there, can you illuminate that for me, or?
So you specifically called out like a BMX park?
Yeah.
You mean the skate park?
Yeah, there was a line about BMX and skate, and I'm not sure I remember it correctly, but it was certainly in a category by itself, but I would consider it a park.
Was it something where it said you could, somebody could build a BMX or a skate park in this zone? Is that, and we don't have one, but you could, and that's what you're referring to? Because I don't specifically know what you're referring to.
Yeah, and I didn't bring the code with me or a computer to pull it up and find it again.
And again, you could have a park that's not a city park. I mean, you could have, right, you could have, you could have a private BMX park. You could have a private skate park. I mean, and you could call it a park, but it doesn't mean it's a city park. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I get that. I should have brought it and dug it.
No, and I want to answer it. I just don't know specifically what you're referring to.
Um, I don't know. Can we do the search of the code for BMX and?
I can do my best.
Tell me where it is, you know?
Kelly, I'll do it.
Okay.
Or I can try to do it on the phone.
I should be able to do it here.
Or skate. It was both skate and BMX.
All right, I have 16.03060, public uses, institutional and civic. And let's see what it says about skateboard and BMX parks. Kelly, again, 16.03.060.
So what I can speak to in general terms is there are, you have like a class one, class two, and class three. Skate parks are probably identified as a class three use because there's different noise levels associated with it. There's different impacts in terms of how they're used. And so you have the differentiation of how, the use categorization as a class two versus a class three. And so sometimes, so in any land use category, right, it may be a park use, but a different level of attention might need to be put to it, and so a specific call out is identified for that specifically. And so a skate park, because of a higher level of noise or the type of use itself, is called out for a class three categorization, that kind of thing might be the case. And so that's why it's called out separately, where in this case, they're both class two categorizations, the categorizations that we're looking at. They're the same impacts, they're the same considerations. So it's apples to apples.
Okay, does that help?
Yeah, yeah.
And she's right. The reference to that was just saying what the public use impacts would be, and it's a class three.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's the only reference to BMX in the code. See, I learn something every night, too, right?
Right, is there other questions? So I've got maybe a legal question. The Luba case and the ruling from Luba, was that specific to the code of that city?
Yeah, and interestingly enough, the two parties were reversed, because there was, the other party was arguing a code interpretation, the city was saying it wasn't allowed. But yeah, it was the court then finding that, based on the presentation, that they found that the public trails fell within the definition and the intent, no specific, again, they found conflict between different provisions, but they found that it was most closely aligned with an interpretation that it was included within the public park system.
And does that create case law?
I don't think it's, I don't, I wouldn't say that that case is like, you're going to get reversed, you know, if you don't rule this way. I wouldn't go that far. I would say it's instructive as to the procedures and the ability to get to the intent and the goal of the overriding, the overriding intent of the, not only the code, but of the master plans. And as an example of, very specific example in this case, as to how they treated a similar situation. But no, I don't think, we have a judge here, and I might ask him, but I don't think it would be binding precedent.
I just lost my other question. Oh, I guess you already answered it. Your opinion is that that would apply, the same ruling would apply to, in our code?
What I would say is that Luba would use the same analysis to evaluate the code interpretation that this body or the City Council brings forward.
Okay. All right, thank you. And just to make sure I understood, your comment was that in this case, the precedence is through the Trails Master Plan, that it is the highest and most restrictive?
So it's the code section, let me pull it up specifically. When you're talking about reviewing the most restrictive, it says where a code imposes greater restrictions than those imposed or required by other rules or regulations, "the most restrictive or that imposing the higher standard shall govern." It says most restrictive or that imposing the higher standard.
Can I respond to that as well? There's statutory construction when lawyers and when we look at how to interpret codes and laws and all that kind of stuff. We have a whole list of, that we go through, that the courts have set up, that guide us, guide the courts specifically on how to interpret statutes. Because as good as these legislators are in Oregon, they do leave some ambiguities every once in a while and some contradictions. So one of the, one of the rules of construction is, and I looked, I knew that, I knew what it said and what it meant, but I forgot the Latin term, and it's lex specialis derogata legi generale. And what that means is a specific law overrides a general law. And that is very common, okay? So if you have, if you have a very specific law that says you have to do this, and then you have this general law that, yeah, it could be interpreted that way, you're going to apply the specific. And you even get down into other examples of if you have a statute and you have one provision of that statute that specifically says something, and you have something else in that statute that could be interpreted to say something else or in contradiction to that, you're going to apply the one that's very specific. And that's not uncommon. But what that does is that is normally encompasses when you're interpreting something that is within the same body of laws. For example, interpreting two different provisions within the same code, right? But when you're looking at, we're interpreting different, basically different levels and different overriding principles with master plans and the code and the zoning, you know, all of these different things. I'm not necessarily convinced that that's that relevant to this, but that's up to the body to decide.
All right. Any other questions? Thoughts or concerns? If not, then I will invite the applicant to come forward for rebuttal if you so choose.
Okay. Well, thank you. So I'll answer some questions that I heard come up. So I think it was Ms. Baxter had asked, what's the implication of this? And on Exhibit A, I've printed out every reference in the Development Code that references recreational trail. These include tables from every zone, and it lists recreational trails and parks separately. So everywhere you see the term recreational trail in this instant, it would be replaced with parks. And every site of permitted review process that would apply to a recreational trail would get replaced with what's currently allowed for parks. So in this case, in three zones, recreational trails are not permitted. And if you apply staff's position and classify them instead as a park, that they would now be permitted through a land use process. So the major impact is allowing recreational trails where they previously were not permitted to be.
Can I ask you a question? What, so there's different ways to do this, because I know that there's a definition of a recreational trail in the Development Code. And we have trails that are also listed or referenced in the park system, right? If the City Council wanted to do an ordinance that would amend the general ordinance on parks to specifically say that all trails, the Lebanon Trail System is part of the Lebanon Park System, would you still have an argument?
I don't know. That hasn't been presented, and I haven't thought through it. So going back to the presentation, City SAB said that there is some sort of discrepancy in the code. To me, it's very clear. There's use tables. The use tables list uses, recreational trails listed as a use. It's defined in the Development Code, and there are specific reviews that are tied to that use. So to me, there is no inconsistency. It's very clear that when you read recreational trail in a use table and you follow that across to see, is that permitted or by what review type, it clearly calls out what that is. And staff is just simply not reading the code as it is written. That is not an ambiguity. So when they say, I had a choice on what type of application to submit, I wouldn't submit for a zone map amendment, because the code is very clear in what it says, where trails are permitted and where they are not. So the only issue and the only reason that this application is before you is because staff is not reading the use tables or the definitions that clearly state recreational trail is a use in every single zone in the city, and it's outlined whether they're permitted or by what review type. There is no inconsistency. The only inconsistency is how staff, it looks at this table, interprets it. I think if the average person was to open a Development Code and read a table, they would come to the same conclusion that I have. When we talk about cases and setting case precedent and things of that nature, Luba is very discretionary when there is a conflict, if there is ambiguity. If you say, does fence height include a trellis? And staff says, yeah, that includes a trellis. You know, Luba or the state would give deference to the city because they're interpreting their code, but they do not give deference to the city when it is clearly expressed and written in the Development Code. And in this case, there's a clear definition, it's clearly in a use table, and this would be a clear remand back to the city. So with that, I'll close my presentation and answer any questions you might have.
So what is the, what is the impact of the master plan, the Parks Master Plan? Doesn't that create the ambiguity?
If you want to apply the goals and the policies of the master plan, you update your Development Code. If the city wants trails in recreational zones or low-density zones or other zones that are prohibited, amend the Development Code and allow that to take place.
Which was amended last, the Development Code or the Parks Master Plan?
I don't think it matters. If there's a conflict between your master plan and the Development Code and those conflict, you update what applies the law to the development, which is the zoning code. If you want to apply the goals and policies of your master plan, the Development Code is your tool, and if it's not correct, correct it.
I have a question for you. I know you both said you weren't opposed to trails, but however, I just wonder if, are you opposed to the specific trail near your property in this case?
So people that spoke in support of the city's position brought up a development-specific project. Development-specific project is not the review of this. This is looking at a Development Code and how the city interprets it. I'm not opposed to a trail that is proposed near my property. The trail that is proposed near my property is under the Lynn County jurisdiction. It has nothing to do with how the city permits trails. The Lynn County code prevails. The Lynn County trail or code allows public trails to be permitted in their zone, which where this trail project is located, takes place. So this amendment has nothing to do with it, but it was brought to light to that, and if the city is improper And if the city is improperly applying their Development Code, then that, that's the history of why this has come to be. It's brought to my attention. It seems like a pretty big oversight. You find out trails are not even being reviewed when they're even, they don't, you know, there's trails out there that have been permitted without a land use review at all. So it's the fact that city staff is not applying Development Code in this case is the reason why I'm bringing it up. I think they're perfectly appropriate in a low-density zone. I think they provide connections and predominant zone in your community is low-density, and it would be appropriate to have a trail that connects parks that are typically in low-density zones. But if you have to get there by a creative interpretation of your code, I don't think that's following the law that's been established. And if you want to do it, just correct it. There's a process. The city can initiate it. It's pretty straightforward.
So, so if the intent, if, if, if you're right, let's say you're right in, in what you're proposing, and it turns out that the intent or the goal of not only this body, but the policymaking goal of the city council is directly in line with what they would be consistent with the staff's code interpretation, essentially all we're doing is stalling the implementation of the trails, not stopping them?
I don't understand your question. It's not about stalling or stopping a trail. It's about interpreting.
Well, I mean, let's say, let's say that, okay, we, we decide that we do have to do this modification or amendment of the, of the zoning ordinance, and it's very clear that there's substantial support to have the trail system included specifically because, you know, let's say, and again, I'm assuming your argument is right, and, and we have to do that, and they do that. That's a process, and they go through that process. I guess I'm just trying to figure out what the ultimate gain would be other than not building them now and building them later.
Say the last part again?
Building them, it would only be building them later instead of building them now.
So you're concerned about going through a review process to amend the code?
Nope. Don't restate my question. My question is, is what would be the ultimate result?
From what, a misinterpretation or a zone map amendment?
Yeah. What would be the result if, if, I'm making two assumptions. I admit that. I'm making two assumptions. I'm making an assumption that you're right in your argument, and I'm making an assumption that the intent of the policy intent of the city council and this board would be that we do want these trails. So if we have to go through that process, the only thing we're ending up with is a delay. Isn't that true?
I guess in my more legal and code-based brain, what I think you're saying is, why not rely on a misinterpretation of the code? I mean, a code amendment doesn't have to take long. There's public noticing requirements, but typically it can be done in two to three months, and there's no active trail that's being affected by this that I am aware of. So I don't think it would delay anything. It would just be simply stopping this process and going through the one that's more appropriate. If the community desires trails in that area, go through the proper process.
You would agree that if we're comparing the master plan and the zoning laws, that there is an ambiguity?
I guess I don't understand what you're trying to have me say.
No, but I mean, I mean, what I'm saying is, is there, if you were to just set the master park, Parks Master Plan and the different, the, the master plans, comprehensive plan, and the zoning ordinance next to each other, they're not consistent. You would agree?
Well, I think if you had staff, they would say, "Master Plan trails are conceptual, and they could move." And in this case, there's two small sections that are not built, that are conceptual, that could be built outside the residential zone. So it could very well be the intent of the master plan was not to have it in a residential zone. The only residential zone where trails are built are public parks. And trails in parks could fall under that park definition because they're connecting park amenities. There's only two trails outside of public sidewalks that are not built, and their alignment could change. The zoning, underlying zoning of one of those is a higher zone where trails are permitted. So the master plan may not conflict. It's just maybe the zone map or the comprehensive plan of destination in the city has not been updated, or the actual alignment is not that specific.
But if I may, to, to further your conversation with the land use tables, the industrial zone is also identified as an area in which the same conflict arises with the residential low-density zone. And there's a number of off-street trails that are identified as alignment within the master plan in the industrial zone. And so then that furthers, that the master plan identifies a number of trails, not within just a single zone, but within a number of zones that aren't aligned with the zoning as it's written. So the comprehensive plan and the master plan that are aligned.
I think the case is, if you look at trails in the industrial zone, those were permitted without land use review. So my question is, are these really intended to be in these zones, or have they just been permitted in that manner? And if there is an inconsistency between the master plan, reflect the code. I can't predict what the city feels is the appropriate designation to this. The only process you can go through that is a zone map or a zone, a Development Code text amendment.
And it could just write the process for the future.
Everybody was looking at me. I don't have any more questions.
Well, I guess, I guess the only point I could make to add to that is that, you know, fixing the process could just prevent future challenges to it. You write your process, make it, streamline it for the future, prevent people from, you know, having issues down the line.
Yeah. I think that's a good point because if the average citizen picked up the Development Code, they're not going to say, "Oh, this is table is probably incorrect because we should be looking at the park code section to look at these two definitions to get back to this section."
And I don't think our position has ever been that we, that there was any intention for these different types of interpretations between the master plan and the zoning to occur. They were pointed out, and we appreciate that. And again, from a city staff position, our, what we do is try to make an interpretation that we believe we can propose to the policymakers, and you are the policymakers. I want to give you that credit, but then you also do have a higher board of policymakers. But at that point, and, and I want to thank you for bringing that forward and bringing these kind of issues forward and having the type of argument and the kind of conversation that we've had tonight. I appreciate that because I think it's very fruitful and I think it's, it's good for the process. And I appreciate the, the way you've presented it and the respectful way you've presented it. So I thank you for that. And with that, again, it's, I, I don't like this saying, but I find myself saying it too often, is I don't have a dog in the fight. My job is simply to help staff legally provide the interpretation that, that staff believes is the appropriate interpretation, give what I believe to be the proper legal ramifications, the review that I think would have if this unfortunately were to have to go to Luba or something like that, the deference that they would give to the, to the policymakers in interpreting their own statutes or ordinances. And, but, but other than that, I, I think unless there's more questions, we've probably, probably heard all of the arguments that are, have been made and so eloquently made and so well-written and laid out in, in the written memorandum. Not only, I believe, and I'm not taking credit for it because it was Ms. Hart that did all of it as far as the, the code interpretation, and, and I tried to assist where I could, as well as the, the arguments that have been made by Ms. LaRocque, and I don't know if you wrote any of it, but anyways, by, by Ms. LaRocque in writing. Unless, unless you guys think that there's more to be heard as far as evidence or, or testimony, probably up to the commission.
Don't want to cut you short. If you've got more rebuttal.
No, I just wanted to give the commission the opportunity. Is there anybody else that had any questions or clarifications?
This will be your last opportunity, presumably.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. With that, then, we will close the public hearing. All further discussion will be amongst the planning commissioners. So this is a tough one. What we're being asked is whether we affirm the interpretation of the staff in this matter or whether we deny the interpretation of this matter. So I guess just to let you know, there is no specific right and wrong. It's more of what your opinion is and what you feel is the appropriate interpretation. We're not asked to be perfectly right or perfectly wrong, if there is such a thing. So what I think I'd like to do with planning commission's permission is maybe poll each one of you and see which way you're leaning based on what you've heard tonight. And then we will come up with some type of a decision. Is that agreeable? And I will go first. I don't mean to blindside you with it. So if that's okay, is that, it's like I say, this is a little bit different. Are you okay, Kristen?
Whatever you want.
Okay. You okay, Lori?
Yeah.
Tina? Okay. So I guess my opinion is, it's, it's pretty obvious. There's some incongruencies in the master plan and in the code. I believe that the intent outweighs the reality and the specifics. And in my opinion, the intent of the city was to put together a Trails Master Plan and a Trail System that benefited the citizens of Lebanon. And I feel that that's what they have done and continue to do, and I think they've done a great job with that. So given the opinion that we come up with tonight, whether we affirm or deny the interpretation of staff, I think at some point, we need to take another look and maybe iron out some of the incongruencies. But for this interpretation, I think the intent, all down through the years since, since the master plan was put in place, was honest and true. Looking back hindsight, has discovered some of those incongruencies that we need to probably take a look at. So my opinion at this point in time is to affirm the city's interpretation. Lori, you want to go next?
I feel like it's been quite a bit of time since the revisions have been done. I'm not sure, to me, I can see both sides of the argument, I guess. So without, I agree with Dawn about taking a look at it later on as well for further clarification, but maybe I'm just not understanding the depth or the amount of work or something it would take to further drill down and make some revisions. But as long as we could guarantee some way down the line that we revisit it and are able to review it again in further detail, I guess. I appreciate it being brought up. And I would agree with Dawn. Affirm the city.
Kristen?
Kelly, can you answer? I just keep going back to future implications that the interpretation may have. If we give a blanket agreement that recreational trails is considered a park and allowed in low-density, what does the application process look like in the future for other recreational trails that people may want to produce or develop? I know we have the master plan, so I, I believe the intent is good, and it's there, and there's a plan. But what does it look like if any random person wants to say, "I'd like to create a recreational trail in a low-density area"?
So it would be identified as the open space parks and recreational amenity use? And so it would be subject to a conditional use permit unless it's adopted, unless it is implementing the master plan itself, which it would then be subject to an administrative review.
Okay. So it would be pretty ridiculed and looked at closely as far as what the intent and the plan is outside of this master plan?
Correct. And code interpretations themselves are meant to provide clarification and a stopgap until such time as the city has the ability to amend the codes, to formalize the clarification and remove that ambiguity.
Okay.
So, so this is a, a stopgap with the understanding that a situation has been brought to the city's intention, understanding. Yes, we understand that there is that ambiguity. We are legally required to go through this process because an application has been brought forth before us, and so we need to do this. But we also recognize that we do need to move forward with providing clarification, but we do need to do this process first because we have an application before us. So we need to take the time to do this. But we do understand that we are going to have to eventually bring forward a code, a modification as well. But this comes first because there's the application.
Okay. Thank you. I would be inclined to affirm.
Okay. Tina?
I can agree with that, to affirm that. I understand the interpretation, but I also understand it as being a developer side in looking at the way these zones and codes are written, that they're... So I recommend that we probably take a little bit of that later in our code development and fix those issues. But for interpretation-wise, I can affirm that the city is doing it that way.
I spent a lot of time thinking about this because I do like trails, and I, I think they do fit in, in the low-density residential, but I read the Luba appeal and I read the code, and to me, it's straightforward in the code, and we're bringing in too many other things to make the code work. And so I would deny the interpretation.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I don't see anything wrong with cleaning up some ambiguities in the code. But I think I'm going to lean toward the city has done the job of interpreting the code for the, the request the way it should be. So I'm, I'm going to affirm with the city.
You say affirm?
Yeah.
Okay. So do you want this put into a formal motion?
Yeah. I mean, you need a vote.
Okay. All right. So is anybody prepared to make a motion to affirm the city's interpretation? How would you identify the interpretation of what?
We have proposed language.
I don't think we have one.
I don't have it.
Wow, I'm terrible.
The question, I hadn't seen it, so I was like, they're probably going to ask me.
In the back?
Yeah.
What do we have?
You can use mine.
Okay. Go ahead.
Somewhere in the back of it. Right here, page three.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I will move to approve staff's written code interpretations, CI-24-01.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded to approve the interpreter, staff's interpretation. Any further discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you for all your input. This was a tough one. Okay, moving on. We have a section in our agenda that says citizen comments. If there's anybody with us that would like to address the Planning Commission on items that is not on the agenda, this would be the time to do so. All right. Seeing nobody moving toward the microphone, then we'll go on to commission business and comments.
But it just cleared out, didn't it? We do not currently have anything on our agenda for next month, but we do have one currently scheduled for April. So you might be off the hook for next month, currently.
We do have the combined meeting.
But you do have the combined meeting. I apologize that it is a noon meeting. If you want to blame anybody, blame that guy.
Hey, Kelly? Kelly, I never looked this up. What is the appeal route for that? Take it to the city council first? Kelly, I never looked this up. What is the appeal route for that? They take it to the city council first? Or is this something that just goes to the planning commission? Have you looked at it?
We were going to look it up.
No, that wasn't the one I was looking up. I was.
It was?
No, whether it would go to Luba or Circuit Court.
Oh, well, then, yes, it's a standard procedure.
Okay.
Who does it go to?
It goes to city council.
It goes to city council first.
I think Luba, but I did see a code interpretation that went to Circuit Court, which I can't quite understand, so.
That's what we've done before and Tom could tell you all about that.
Was that the Walmart or which one?
Yeah. Well, there were several of them.
Going back to the matter at hand, March twenty sixth at noon is the joint planning commission city council meeting. It is the last one. If you want to blame anybody, blame this guy.
I already formally bowed out.
Yeah.
I will not.
So. Yeah, apologize.
And is the city serving lunch?
Oh, wait, that might change the. No, I'm just kidding.
Yes.
Yeah, we have lunch before, haven't we?
I don't know. I'll get back to you on that.
Most likely. We always have lunch at a lunch meeting.
Yeah.
We charge fifty bucks a plate, but.
Yeah. If I know that some of you guys have work to do, and so there is a Zoom option. I know you probably don't want to drive down from Salem, but if you do, you're welcome to come.
It is it is customary for the city manager to bring treats and lunch and and provide. That may change with our new city manager, but I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm tired, guys.
Can it bring us information back on House Bill fifteen thirty seven for this meeting?
Yeah, I things got busy. Blame him again.
I was just asking.
I I can speak generally to it. That's the mandatory adjustments, right? Okay.
Yeah, sure.
I can speak generally to it, but I I don't have a formal presentation to it, but you guys, I can put something more formal together for our next official meeting. Generally speaking, and it is active, House Bill blah, 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 blah. Fifteen thirty seven is the the bill where housing developments, if they meet a certain criteria and it has to be associated with a a certain density and a certain certain level of affordability, has the ability to request mandatory adjustments to the development code. And they're allowed to request up to ten adjustments for per project. And and there's certain nuances associated to it that all sort of provide you guys a more detailed discussion on what that looks like. I am still working with Tammy, my my right hand man, woman confidant in my department to determine whether or not the easiest path is for us to just amend our code and incorporate it within our code. Because a lot of the adjustments that they have identified are very similar to the adjustments that we already allow for. And so we're still trying to figure out what's the best alternative to it. As it stands right now, nobody has asked us for any of those adjustments and none of the projects that have come forward meet the criteria yet. So it is not a big issue yet within our city. But it is something that we do need to be aware of and might want to make some adjustments to our code for, so. I will bring that forward likely in April. If he stops piling stuff on top of me.
Have you heard of anything that other cities are doing in regard?
There are some cities that are attempting to opt out of it that is incredibly rigorous and requires some significant buy-in from the development community. Where you basically have to get the development community to say that, yes, this city is fabulous and we support them in opting out of it because they give us everything that we want. And that is and they're they're asking for a lot for that. A lot of cities are basically doing a side by side where they have their own code and then they're applying it as a secondary sort of step sort of thing. And there's other cities that are doing kind of what we're doing where they're so similar that it's just sort of here. We're breaking it in. So there's sort of three tiers to it. We're still trying to figure out what's the the best tier to it for us, but it's it just hasn't been a big issue for us yet, so. We do have a system already drafted in place as an internal policy that if it does come in place, come before us in the interim, if we don't have anything automatically done within our code. State law allows us to process it as what's called a it would be the equivalent of a class two variance application for us. So it's the the mid-tier variance that it doesn't come directly to the planning commission, but it's not just the giving it out like candy, basically. So it still requires a public notification, still has some level of rigor to it, but it's it's there's a process in place for us.
So I don't know. What is a process if I went home and read the code and made notes and say, okay, here's my list of what I want changed? What is the process and does?
You come into the city. You provide us with an application for a code development code text amendment. That includes the proposal of the amendment that you want to propose. And you have to provide a justification for us as to why that development code text amendment is compliant with not only our comprehensive plan, but also the statewide planning goals as well. So you provide a pretty rigorous narrative that that explains all of that. It's a twenty five hundred dollar application because it takes us time to, A, process it, review it, to make sure, hey, are we going to support it or not? But then also there is legal noticing requirements. And you have to do two public hearings, which takes a lot of time for us to put the agenda packets together and then go through the hearing and meeting processes.
And quite honestly, I mean, I do see Laura's point in that what she was saying was that we don't need a code interpretation because it already says what it says. But now that we have an interpretation, she certainly could put in now for a code for a code modification. Right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So does that come with a twenty five hundred dollar fee?
A lot of work.
It's a it is a lot of work to go through it, right? So this has not been an issue because we haven't had proposal for a trail in the zone or anything like that, so.
I mean, the amount of time that she got staff would spend. Like it should be easy.
Well.
We have to go through all the state planning goals and all that.
And I understand that. You know, I but as a citizen, when I was sitting back there, it's like, well, you know, I don't like this code, but obviously I'm not going to hire a planner and then toss another twenty five hundred bucks towards it. It would be nice if, you know, there was a way to be.
Well, the way you do it is you go to the city council meeting and you talk to the city council, and if they like your idea, then they direct staff if they like your idea enough, right? But so it's the city council directs policy. City council directs us to implement that policy and we implement that policy through those the application of our development code and the change of our development code. But the public themselves, if they want to be the the measurement of that tool of change, they have that application process before them.
The reality of what's on Kelly's plate in the past plate right now, unless they're dictated instructed by city council to do it, it's just not feasible to do it right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Well. And so that's where it's like, if if there is something that is directly impacting something, we we will address it through appropriate measures. But we don't generally just audit a code if there's not an issue and go, oh, there's there's something we change it because it does take a lot of time.
I have a clarification question. Generally speaking, so if you have a master plan for something, at the time that a master plan is created, are all the little details gone through at that time or it's only until, so like, for instance, on the trails plan, coming into the situation where we have potential to go through low density and it may or may not be allowed, was that considered at the time the master plan was created?
Yeah.
Trying to wrap my head around why it's not just now coming up.
So.
Yeah, you you.
Yeah.
You have people that so so we go out, we develop a master. So we develop a master plan. Veted through multiple people. And a master plan is, in a sense, somewhat conceptual.
Right.
Have the ability to shift things around. Let's say we wanted to move the trail.
Sure.
Sense when they do it. They're not looking at the.
Okay.
But that gives you, it's like your street network.
Generally in alignment, right? You you might move it here or there, but you're generally in alignment, right?
My point was is that the experts or the people that put these tracks together looking to see that they the other vision in the code.
They're not fine tooth combing the code to make sure.
Well, now, and 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 this is to give you some context. Our comprehensive plan was adopted in two thousand and four. That was a whole scale change comprehensive plan. Which meant that there was a wholesale complete change of the development code. Throw everything out with the bathwater, completely rewrite everything, right? That code was being rewritten by one person.
Okay.
You have the master plan, the trails master plan, that was being written by another person. Trails master plan started in two thousand and seven. Two thousand and seven code, the old code was in place. So when you were reviewing the master plan and you were starting the master plan, you were looking at everything and you were going all of these zones, all of this is permitted. Everything is fine. So when you look at the trail master plan, all of the zones that are listed there, you have to do a zoning code analysis as part of your trails master plan. And it has identified which zones the trails are permitted in.
So that's where the intent comes into play.
That is where the intent comes into play.
The zoning.
It was clear. And in the old code, parks was a generalized statement and parks was inclusive of all the recreation and recreational amenities, which was inclusive of trails. And then in the new code, the writer over here, person over here writing it's not inclusive of the trail master plan over here is writing a completely separate document and creating separate land use designations.
And creating definitions as.
And creating definitions that is separate from a different documentation. And so you clearly have an intent that was adopted and implemented, and the intent is there. And you just have you have the the meshing that that was clearly.
Left hand and right hand.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And and that happens all the time. And and for something as simple as this, where been implementing trails for twenty years under this and it hasn't.
And all of a sudden, we're up against something where we may not be able to implement the master plan because of a new.
You have to look at what is the intent and you have to you're looking at the city's intention is clear that trails are intended. There's their intention under the comprehensive plan that trails are intended. It's very clear upon the adoption and the describing of the master plan that upon describing of the master plan, there was an evaluation of the the code at the time and trails were intended.
Is there not like a grandfather clause? Kind of sort of that's what we just did, basically. I mean. We interpreted it.
Grandfather clause means it's something that was already being built at the time of the code change.
Well, that's what this is essentially then, right?
I mean, the master plan is, but the trail itself, a a trail itself is not constructed.
So it's still up for interpretation.
You you asked about whether somebody could come in and file an application to build a trail. That would be very rare.
Yeah, I was trying to play devil's advocate.
But we have a unique case because some of the trails that get built. They are privately funding. But it's it'd be a very unique situation. Ninety percent of them be done by initiated by the city or initiated by the hesitation.
So what do you feel is next step?
I mean, you got to let them go through the process, but apparently I'm doing a code change.
Well, you can wait until somebody applies for it, right?
Once they take this to the city council.
Implement it. You're going to do it.
Well, I mean, I think whatever they decide as far as. They may still say council would direct.
Well, and you guys are a quasi-policy directive body as well, right? You you guys help make land use decisions as well, so yourself as a body have identified that that is a a desire to to make that happen too, and so.
And do know that you guys don't go to the city council. Have appeals from finding efforts and what this body decides.
Yes.
If you pay attention to it. It's not like a going to the council, we don't really care. They they hear what they don't. They do pay attention to.
So for all intents and purposes, we could actually ask staff to consider a code amendment, bring it back to us. And then we send it on to city council. Because I think it's.
I would think that that would be more of an initiative.
Yeah.
So they would have to ask for it.
You can make a recommendation to council that the code is changed. It's an advisory position at that point?
Kelly was right. I mean, this is more quasi. It is quasi.
Yeah.
So really that kind of directive. Send something up to council. You guys could could come to the city council.
That's what I was trying to.
This is done, so you guys can go and say anything you want to the city council.
But I mean, as part of our readout to the city council upon appeal, because we anticipate that this will largely be appealed, right? We would we would read out what happened at the planning commission meeting. We would identify that the planning commission vote was five to one in support of staff's interpretation. But the planning commission did recognize that it is something that should be addressed as a a future code amendment sooner rather than later. Right? We would take your your quasi-policy advisory position and present that to council as part of your your readout action.
So I'm thinking if we did something like that and be proactive, we might be able to nip this in the bud. Hopefully.
I'm not going to speak to what actions could be nipped in the bud or not. I I.
Well, there's no way to, but I'm just saying that.
Well, I I.
For the. I think tonight's perfect.
Know what they call a carve out?
Everybody has twenty four hours.
This carve out sometime.
She spends a hundred hours on it and I come in here and do all the time.
Throw code cleanup and AI, you're good.
I love you, Tina.
Brilliant. On the build Lebanon trails, so this is more just kind of a curiosity question, but so the master plan, if build Lebanon trails hadn't been established and was going forth on, you know, getting funding and establishing these trails, is that something that the city eventually would have done themselves, given the funding? Or is it purely dependent on?
No, I mean, a a lion's share of the trails.
Okay. Okay.
So so the master plan initiation.
Right.
Would we have? I don't know, I it. I can go, oh, we have done this. I guess that would come from.
Okay.
You're building trails. Had to hire somebody just to go out for the grants and all that kind of stuff. Build Lebanon trails is.
Okay.
So they attributed a lot in terms.
Okay.
But the good thing for the city was just the cost of maintaining.
Sure, and they do a lot of volunteering and.
Yeah, they do. I think our biggest concern is.
Yeah.
You don't have a park and recs?
Yeah.
Nope.
You want to start that conversation?
We don't have a separate park and recs.
We tried. No, we've got two, we do have two parks in place. No, 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 she's talking about a separate parks.
I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking about completely separate.
What would that take?
Take the the pool to stop their parks and rec. That's a big discussion.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Because we already have one, but it's just so. Because we already have one, but it's just so.
Searched it in the past.
How many? How many meetings I've gone to with people that they wanted to start a parks and recs meeting?
Sorry, I mean, there, Albany has one, that Sweet Home.
Remember, we have to have our voters approve of it.
That's great. Ultimately, it has to be funded.
That's why there's a lot more parks and recs.
Doesn't anybody know a guy? I mean. I don't know that guy, but.
My argument was.
I don't know that guy.
When I was coaching, you know, we had these great baseball parks and that kind of stuff. There was, and, and probably two-thirds of my kids were coming from outside the city. Only one-third of the kids' parents were paying for the parks. That's why it always bugged me.
So that, I mean, that's because I coach kids' sports too, and that's one of my biggest concerns is facilities and fields and just, it's.
You figured it out. I'll, I'll be in support and I'll, I'll be the first board member.
Okay, when you, when anybody thinks of a guy, let me know.
Okay, any other comments? Any other, anything else on your mind to bring up? Right, then we are adjourned.
I'd say good job. You guys did a good job.
A hard one.
It was a tough one.